All right, good evening. My clock says six o'clock, so let's go ahead and get started. We'd like to welcome you out to our Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, January 18th, 2017, 17th, 2017. Hard to believe it's already halfway through the month of January, so we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Davis, if you could lead us, please.
Will the audience please arise? For the audience, please repeat the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first, our next item on the agenda is to review our meeting minutes from December 7th, 2016. Has everybody had a chance to read through those, and is there any questions or comments or corrections? It was Kim's first one back, wasn't it? Mr. Anderson, do we have enough here that we're here that night to actually act on this?
We only need three.
Okay, then we're good.
We weren't here, so I was gonna say that neither one of them was there, so...
Any comments, Brad or Richard?
I don't.
I'm not aware of anything as I've read through it. I didn't entertain a motion regarding the approval of our meeting minutes from December 7th.
I'll move.
A motion from Commissioner Davis? Second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Wilkinson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item on the, on the agenda is the zone change and preliminary plat for cobblestone townhomes. Mr. Anderson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you can see, the image right there, the subject property, being outlined in black, it's currently zoned C1. It's one of those two properties that we have in town. I think that, not that zoning designation is intended to allow for and require any commercial development to be limited in scope. It's intended to allow for commercial development on a small scale that might be compatible with a neighborhood, residential neighborhood type of a setting. I believe the subject property was zoned neighborhood commercial about 15 years ago, maybe a little bit less than that. And some of you will recall that the applicants approached the city and talked to the Planning Commission a few months ago, excuse me, about the prospect of changing the zoning from neighborhood commercial, their C1, to some residential zone, potentially with the idea of applying for approval of some type of a multifamily or townhome kind of development. That's what we discussed. As, as I can recall, the feedback that the applicants got relative to that kind of concept was, was pretty warm, and in light of that, they proceeded to apply and have the zoning changed from C1 to R3, and to apply for preliminary plat approval for a townhome development that would have four, five unit buildings, over 20 units, on what is just under two and a half acres. So I believe the density as proposed is nine units to the acre, and the maximum allowable density in the R3 zone would be 12 units to the acre. I guess maybe just kind of an issue of time. Also, if you mentioned that the staff who looked at a handful of different concept plans for the subject property, might be putting up the latest and greatest. This is one that our staff feels very, very comfortable with. Access to the project would be off of what would be a newly constructed continuation of 1700 East, north of Canyon Road, which would basically just be constructed to the northern boundary line of this property, where they would then build a four width road into the project, a safe hole width, curb face to curb face. It would be built to meet our, our local street standard. They wouldn't construct the park strip and sidewalk in the north side with the idea that when the property develops there, those improvements would be done by that developer. But we'll have full access of the units in such a way that, for example, if a fire truck needed, they get, really anywhere on the site, they can pull in and back up and exit as such. So we're about to talk about this kind of design, the hand head type of the design. There's guest parking provided, obviously, for proximity to the units. Yeah, this includes some images, give the mission idea of what the units likely will look like in terms of exterior materials and kind of the overall form. I don't believe they've contracted with a builder yet to build the units at all. Like we have, there would be some adjustments from the images that you've been provided, but certainly we would expect that it be constructive of as best as we can measure the type of quality and the overall type of design as what, again, you've been provided. Another thing to touch on...
Mr. Anderson, you say "when we've been provided." I'm, I'm not seeing it in our packet of stuff, so I apologize today.
I thought we had those with the staff report. So the last few pages of the staff report.
Is it?
There were some photographs in one front elevation.
There we go, okay. I'm with you. For some reason, my staff report went black for the first few pages, and I don't know what happened, so, all right.
Maybe just to move on to one other thing. Fencing, walls, it's the typical requirement when somebody builds adjacent to a, like Canyon Road, a collector or material type road, that the developer installed a masonry wall along property line next to that residence. In this case, and from our perspective as staff, I think really it's just a matter of believing that it's gonna be better looking, that rather than a masonry wall, the applicants construct what probably would be some type of a faux wrought iron wall. A lot of times, if you're actually starting to run out of fence, a lot of times, if you're actually built out of aluminum, it probably won't be much cheaper for the applicants to build than to install an actual concrete wall, rather than to put a mow strip under it, do some things that, again, I don't think would be necessarily cheaper. At least, I think they've given them out of open space that they have for some reasons that we also felt applied when the LDS church was built a few years ago, a little bit further west on Canyon Road from here. We didn't want a wall along, along that land use and Canyon Road either, with the idea that it's gonna look better over time if it's open and people can see into that space particularly where we, I think it's always been well maintained and that sort of a thing. So it's our recommendation relative to exterior fencing, that the applicants, again, construct some type of a wrought iron fence on a concrete mow strip along Canyon Road and their 1700 East frontage. We do recommend that they follow the city requirement of constructing a masonry wall on the eastern boundary of the property where it applies a single family residential use next door. But that all being said, staff has no concern recommending that the proposed zone change from C1 to R3 be approved, or that the preliminary plat be approved. Just to make one other note, this exhibit and completed landscape plan, I just turned in today. We've had a chance to look at that pretty quickly today. I've completed a full review of it, yeah, but it does look like the landscape plan that they submitted are requirements.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Is the applicant here, or would they like to come and address the commission?
I don't really have anything to add, other than, in the preliminary approval, there was a discussion about the stoplight, contacting UDOT in front of they installed that, and that happened to be built. They agreed to it, should access protect once they have a final plat approval.
Okay. So for, I guess for the public, if they didn't hear that, doesn't have anything else to add, other than the, the fact that they've contacted UDOT with regards to adding a light at 1700 East and Canyon Road, and that they would provide a, did you say, an access agreement?
Yes.
Does that provide you temporary access until they provide the light, or how does that work?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, thank you. Then, public hearing, correct? Okay, thank you. So I'll entertain a motion that we move into a public hearing, then.
I'll move, we move into public hearing?
Thank you. Commissioner Nielsen, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 This is a public hearing. If you'd like to address the commission with regards to this item on the agenda, this is your opportunity. Don't everybody move at once?
I'll get out of here.
Thank you.
Can I use your pointer?
Yeah, there's one more.
Good evening to everybody. My name is George Garcia. I'm the District Ranger for the Spanish Fork Ranger District located up here on 400 North. Thank you for having me tonight, allowing me to, to speak. I've been here, what, about six years now? First time I've been to a Planning Commission meeting, so this is a good opportunity. We own the property that's just, just west of the development here. This is our administrative site, so it contains a lot of our materials and supplies and that that we use on the forest for constructing trails, building fences, and different things like that. We have some warehouse space. We have an office facility there for our firefighters and that. We really only have two concerns in regards to the development. One is we built a fence here, reconstructed a fence here a couple of years back to keep our horses inside the pasture, so they wouldn't run wild throughout the city of Spanish Fork. We wouldn't want that. So, so really, with the new road going in, really not sure how we're gonna, or who's gonna construct the fence on the other side of the road to keep our horses in the pasture. Unfortunately, our fiscal year started in, in October 1. It runs from October 1 to September 30th, and this was not on our radar at the time we set our budget and, and all that. So we do not have funding to, to build a fence here. The second concern we have is, is we do, there's a canal here, the local irrigation company, and we have some water shares, and from that canal, we get water to irrigate this pasture for the horses to provide summer feed to that. Not sure what's gonna happen to that canal, if it's gonna be buried under the road. As long as we get the water, we need to irrigate our pasture. That's really what we're concerned about, whether that gets converted to a pipe under the road, and then has, has some sort of delivery system to provide water for our horses in, in the summertime. That's really what we're, we're looking at. And again, I haven't seen the other drawing. I haven't, I hadn't seen that one until today, so this one here. So we'd be located over here on this side, just not sure how that existing fence would get relocated, and then, again, that, I don't know if the irrigation company's here tonight, but I, I don't know what the plans are for that, that irrigation ditch.
What property's that eastbound sitting on, Dave?
The ditch.
The ditch, he's...
You know, we, we wonder that, too, and so, one thing we, we did, we sent, we sent this document over to our land surveyor, and he's gonna try to fit it into his, his schedule to see if he can pinpoint the...
The boundary and that.
It's on your side of the fence.
The canal? Okay.
So if that's, if it's on your side, then you're, you're the one responsible for the ditch, and so they wouldn't be touching it anyway.
So is the road gonna be over, is it gonna split the ditch, or is the road gonna be on the parcel that's being developed?
So the road's gonna be, sorry, the road's gonna be on the east of this line.
Oh, okay.
It shouldn't disrupt the ditch or the fence.
Okay, so, yeah, that's, that's the ditch, the, the gray thing, and then the fence is, is that straight line that, that's on the other side of the ditch.
Well, it looks like the easement's on your property, so it shouldn't even have to be touched.
Okay. I didn't know that. Thanks, Dave. Okay. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Good questions.
Yep. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to move out of public hearing.
So move.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any further comments or conversation amongst the commission?
Well, it's good to see this property finally, finally, someone finally figured out a way to develop it.
Is there any concern or uncomfortableness about having townhomes at this location? By anybody on the commission?
We have them all the way down, and you can't get roads, so it's not like, fence is the only thing that I had a little bit of concern about, as David colored the mosh posh, because you've got that one, you've got concrete on the other side, you've got, but you've also got cedar, you've got vinyl. We've got about everything down Canyon Road. I don't see any bad thing on the concept of looking into a beautiful lot, or area. It's not single housing, I mean, it's not single dwellings, so, so I don't, that's the only concern. I was just thinking about it first, but when I go up and down Canyon, Canyon Road, you've got everything there.
Dave, what's the general plan designation again? My, my report's gotten black, so...
Mixed use, so we've, we've kind of debated a little bit over the years exactly what might be fitting for a mixed use designation, but with the last general plan update, we clarified that R3 is, is a zoning district that can be appropriate, it's really up to you.
I mean, to me, it seems like a reasonable approach to Canyon Road in terms of a, you know, we keep, we talk about buffers all the time with regards to, from a, you know, a busy, busy area to a less dense area, and, and so it makes sense to me.
And in my mind, particularly adjacent to what will be a signalized intersection. You know, that, that seems to be the, the ideal place to do something other than single family detached homes. And I just had a question, I don't mean to put Cory on the spot, I was gonna give him a heads up earlier than I'd ask, but do we know anything about the timing for having that signal installed there? Is that five years out, 10 years?
UDOT has done a warrant, a signal warrant study this year, last fall, and I think their intent is to build a signal this year. So the DRC discussion and having the developer touch base with UDOT was to make sure UDOT understood the plan was to add another leg, so their signal design gets done correctly, rather than just a three-way signal.
There's just one other thing I was gonna mention. I appreciate the questions that Mr. Garcia raised. If there, if there was any, any need to relocate a fence or anything like that, if it was impacted at all, we'd look for the developer to restore that, right? So that...
Yeah, if any of the construction and grades need to adjust that, we'd, we'd look to the developer to work with the Forest Service to...
So what side's the fence on, on the ditch? Is it on, is it on the...
It's on the, it's on the east side of the, of the ditch, yeah.
It won't even impact your fence.
It might be, and if it is, if you restore, I mean, that's the one...
Does that need to be a condition?
Yeah, that's a good question.
No, that's part of our typical, yeah, of operations.
Eventually, we're looking to move out of there. The hope, the hope is the long-term plan, is to sell that property, our property downtown, combine into one central facility. We want to stay in Spanish Fork. We hope that works out, but eventually that...
So, so do we.
Just looking for a donor, right?
Yeah.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Just in regards to development along Canyon Road, and I know I, I've asked this question before. What are the, does UDOT have plans to add a middle lane down that area where the increase of traffic that will be coming? I mean, this is just a little area, but we have further up. I know we've done some great changes with that intersection further to the east, but I've had a lot of people ask, why don't we have a middle lane down that?
Yeah, and, and we have heavily petitioned UDOT for that. They're aware of that desire and need. They're typically reactionary, when, when it's needed, we'll build it. We are with these signals at 1700 East, and they're looking at one at 1400 East as well. They're looking at expanding some of the turn lanes in those areas where we see the worst of the problems for people turning left in and out of those roads. So yes, it's on their radar as far as having plans and a date outside of the signal work that I think you'll see happening this next construction season. I'm not aware of anything at this point.
The right-of-way width has, is adequate for that expansion, then?
Yes.
I mean, I assume it does, but...
It is, and it's, we've, we've applied for grants with MAG to, to have the funds to widen out and finish the frontage and provide that, and just, just haven't quite made the list as with all the other projects in the county going on that people are requesting funds for, so it's something we continue to petition and push for.
Any other comments, or? If not, I'd entertain a motion regarding, do you want us to do it both, two different motions?
I think either way, as long as you're clear.
Okay. So regarding the zone change and the preliminary plat.
I'll make it.
Thank you.
I'll move that we approve the cobblestone preliminary plat and that we approve the zone change from mixed use to R3.
See, it's a C1.
Oh.
Mixed use is the general plan designation.
So C1 to R3, okay. And included in that would be the conditions 1 through 6 from the Development Review Committee. Do we need to read those conditions, Dave? Do you want me to read those?
I believe so.
Okay.
This is a recommendation to the City Council, so...
Move that we recommend. There we go.
Okay, I've got a motion from Commissioner Nielsen. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Second from Commissioner Wilkinson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Perfect. I'm gonna guess, I'm gonna kind of jump ship here for a second, Mr. Anderson. Most of you are probably here for the informal discussion on the Warner annexation. Am I, is that, am I probably accurate in that? Raise your hand if you would, just so I know. Then, are we okay if I jump to that other business, and so these guys don't have to sit and listen to three hours of boring discussions?
Certainly.
Okay. Mr. Anderson, I'll jump to other business, then.
The applicants have a presentation that they've given us, and maybe it'd be good just to dive right in. Is that, okay. I haven't seen this yet. I think I have the basic gist of it, but...
So just as a point of clarification, this, this discussion is a non-action item tonight. We won't be making a decision on, or a recommendation on anything tonight, so it's just really more for our information and feedback to you, if I, if I understand correctly, so I'll invite whoever is making the presentation to come forward. If you'll state your name, please.
Okay, if we both come up?
You bet.
I'm Mark Warner. It's my sister Vicki Warner, or Vicki Bradford, I should say. Sorry, old habits.
I'm gonna...
Okay. So this is more just clarification of some of the questions that came up last time. Just wanted to give you just a little bit of history on the property, and then talk about our concept, concept plan, so, you know, this is a century farm. This was homesteaded back in the early 1850s when the... I apologize. When we had the upper settlement, was settled in Spanish Fork. My third great-grandfather was living in a dugout, and then they, they homesteaded this farm, so, his son Jesse Peyton Holt was the first one in 1860 ready to record it as part of the property. And he farmed it for all of his life, he and his wife. This is his family. This was in front of the, the home that's up there, that is no longer on our property, but it's just north of it. This is his family, so, of which my great-grandfather and my grandfather are both, both in there. I don't know how to use that, oh. Great-grandfather and my grandfather, sitting right there. So anyway, just wanted to, these are the prior owners. My great-grandfather owned it after Jesse Peyton Holt. He was the first Warner, and, well, and his brother, Morgan David, married sisters. They both owned a piece of it, after which my grandfather and my parents owned it after that, and the northern end of it, Earl Warner, owned that piece, which was bought by my sister and my father, actually, both of them. So just talk, talk a little bit about concept plans, talk to you about, about the history, let you know, our roots run deep here in Utah County, and I grew up here. I live in West Jordan now, but I grew up here, spent a lot of time down on the farm. So we, we want to talk a little bit about zoning density. When we, when we purchased this property from my siblings, our siblings, we were looking at the medium density, which is what was being proposed as medium density. This piece over here is high density, and I think high density up here. This piece is what we're talking about, and we were looking at medium density. The issue we have is the water table's high enough that we really can't build basements up there. So not being able to build basements, we're looking this more as a retirement community with houses, smaller houses built on, on grade, on grade with no, no basement, so in, so in order to do that, really, big lots are not really gonna sell if you can't build a quality home with a basement. So we're looking at really the medium density, more, more, more dense. Volunteer drive, we'll talk about that when we get to the concept plan, but we're looking at volunteer drive coming right through the middle of it, which we're fine with. The walking path, I think that was another thing that the city was looking at, is building a walking path through there, and we're fine with that. That's great, to make, make room for that. Bradford Lane is over here, whoops, Bradford Lane is right over here. Not sure that Bradford Lane, once we build this, needs to even stay open, except down to this point, and certainly up to this point, so Miling Hells can get into his, but I don't know if there's any access anywhere else off of that, but that's, that's up to the, up to the city. We're, we are looking at high-quality homes, Arrive Homes is the builder we're working with, and Atlas Engineering. So, timing, we'd really like to get started as soon as we can. We've got substantial investment already that we're paying interest on, so we'd really like to, to get moving. I'll let my sister talk a little bit about RB Construction.
Okay, so this is our construction company, right here, and I'm really excited about this project. It's gonna be fun. I think it's a great area, just an extension of the town, and I think it's gonna be great. The walking path to come through that, through the property somewhere along there with volunteer drive. It connects right now, right there, the walking path, those, down to the, to the river, and it's just been a great thing for us to live that close to it and have that access to it. We go down there quite often, actually. Anyway, so as part of the annexation, we have agreed with the city that if it is annexed, that we, within three years, we will move our construction company somewhere else. We realize that it is, it's kind of a dangerous street, really, for, for us and for the public to be pulling all that equipment in and out of there in that small of an, an area. that small of an, an area. We're kind of enclosed on, this, this is five acres right here. We're looking at a couple of pieces of property here in town, and actually have found one that we think is compatible for our, to move our company to if the annexation goes through and we, and we can purchase that property. So that's another timing thing. We don't want that property to get away from us, but we don't want to buy it either until the annexation goes through, so we can move our property down to there. So on the zoning part, last time, it was brought up that they, there could be multiple different kinds of zoning right within that area, and so along the hillside, several people have said that they didn't want to be anything but agriculture, and, I mean, we're fine with, with that, with them staying agricultural culture property. I don't know about the east end here, what kind of zoning would come into that. I know several people in there want to all, sell their, sell their properties. We've been approached about a couple of them to see if we would like to buy them, but at this point, we don't want to buy anything, we just want to get going on ours. But it kind of, everything is hinging on the, on the density, as Mark said. If, for low density, we just feel like we couldn't sell big lots with no basements. This, right where the construction company is, is a little bit higher. We're looking at having homes there that could have basements if we fill that up, so that's about the only place that you could have basements. And we do have a concept plan. How do you put that? Okay, so this, the road going down the center there is Volunteer Drive.
This is north now. Come on, that way.
Okay, this is, this all could change in a second, as you all know, but we are thinking...
Just concept, right?
Yeah, just a concept. Town homes or condominiums there on the bottom of the screen, or that could also be senior living or single-family dwelling lots. Like Mark said, our roots grow deep here. We don't, we, the reason we decided to develop in the first place instead of selling it is because we want something of quality in there. We, we don't want it to be trashy and turn into something bad. We'd like to have a real strict HOA there with parks and walks and, and whatever going through it.
This is, this is high density over here, and I think they're looking at more of the multi-story apartment condo kind of things, so we felt like this was more of a transition.
Right.
Even this is still, I think this is still between five and six units, but it's still more high-end, it still fits into the median density.
Yeah, that was a transition from the high density over to the...
And more of the single-family homes up against these...
Apartments, yeah.
...three, four apartments.
So those, up at the top, those homes there, that would be like a senior living complex there. There's not very many in Spanish Fork. We've been looking at several around, around Utah. There is a possibility that we could do the whole entire property in that. It seems like there's, there's quite a bit of interest in that, and that would be a separate HOA for the, for the seniors. The walking path is a really big draw for, for the seniors. And then, of course, I said, those homes right there could be, could actually have basements in that area. We'd have to bring quite a bit of fill-in, but they could have basements.
Because of the water table, what you think of in this area, you probably could be...
What, what is the water table? How deep is it?
It's really, it's really high.
Wait till spring.
Uh, yeah. So do you, do you guys have any questions about any of this?
This is a little better view of the, of the construction area.
Who told you these were gonna be apartments?
Well, in, in talking to...
Mike McKell, actually, told us that that's what he has in mind.
That's what he has in mind, and it is, it is commercial, right below the plan, yeah, it's commercial down here.
Yes, commercial, yeah.
This is not very wide, so right, just the bottom of that, it's all commercial.
Right, and it, and this is all high density, so he just says...
Is that what we, Dave, is that what we have, general plan designation is the high density there?
On the property to the west, yes.
So that's what, or that's what Mike told us he was gonna do with that.
So, and we've looked at, we've looked at other, other possibilities. Again, this is, this is just, just one, but these, these are, again, are very, are smaller lots. We just, we just don't feel like, this one's probably more realistic, we just don't feel like a, a big lot without a basement is, is really gonna sell.
Yeah, not bringing in enough revenue. You can imagine how much it's gonna cost to move that, or the, move the company, the construction company. We're looking at a minimum of about 10 acres, so that, when you get into light industrial, 10 acres, that's a, that's a good chunk of, of money to move that, plus buildings and, and whatever. Go to that last concept plan. Do you know, okay, so this one right here, though, that would be townhomes down on the bottom. That was a townhome transition from the apartments to, to that, and we really like that, too. If you guys are aware of Arrive Homes, I mean, they are really high-quality type homes.
This is a little higher density, but still under rate, under rating, that's what it's, it's, it's...
Yeah. So the whole thing there is still, still medium density.
I just made a comment on the senior living. I concur with you, I think there's a real shortage of that for Spanish Fork. We've, the planning commissions drove around Utah County and looked at a few nice ones. There's one in Springville that's kind of similar to that.
This would be very similar.
That's one of the Springville ones.
It's the Springville one, yeah.
That, that was very nice. I, I can see...
Another one PG that I just came across.
I think the citizens would really...
There seems to be a lot of, I didn't think there was gonna be that much interest. I've been surprised at how many people have said they would like to live in an area like that.
The walking trail, this makes real sense for that.
The walking trail, yes.
I think the plan would be, too, to start up with lots in the, see how that senior, I mean, that's quite a few seniors, you know, how big you can go with that, and maybe that translates down to the lower one half, just depending on how...
Yeah.
That'd be a set of projects, we have a, that's a major collector road, pretty, that's a collector road going through the middle of it.
Right.
So we just see one side and then decide what...
What the interest was and...
What, yes, what the interest was with the senior.
I'm just continuing that same...
With this, with a, with a really strict HOA that we would control at first. So, anyway...
It's not the key with, you know, they kind of have to have something that controls landscaping and still look, otherwise, you end up with, you know, you have the town projects that you're just selling price point only, and now you're typically not, yours aren't kept, and I think they're really sensitive to making sure this stays nice always.
Yeah.
We are. We want to bring our grandkids and say, this is, you know, where we grew up on the family farm, and now look at how nice it is. And, I mean, that'd be great if the whole thing was senior living. I'm, I think that'd be fantastic if we, if we, if that happened, if we could sell that, and it'd be a quiet area, and it's such a quiet, nice area of town, anyway. Super, super nice.
Possibility around the river.
Yeah, the river.
Open areas and maybe...
Park, yeah.
Any other comments from, or questions from the commission? Feedback is what they're really looking for here.
I can't remember where this sits in context. Is this just east of the Wendy's?
Sure.
Yes.
Just across the...
Yeah.
Yep.
Back a little bit.
It's back, it's along that road that comes around.
Yeah, it's, it's...
South of the Ferringale House.
Dave, you had a picture you sent us.
It's right there.
Right there, yeah, there it is.
I think we looked at that before, I just couldn't remember the, okay.
General plan.
Yeah.
We reviewed it last, last month. We kind of tabled it. Oh, you guys wasn't there.
Yeah, I missed it.
Okay, okay. Oh, that's...
So that's it, right there.
I mean, this is kind of our chance to give our critical feedback and, and, you know.
Well, the, the river bottoms has always been such a, a complex, you know, subject when it comes to annexing and then developing, and it seems like in the past, the City Council and the so forth have kind of wanted to see how whatever's proposed like this fits with the overall, along, you know, but, but in, in realistic terms, you can't really, not everybody's moving at the same pace. You know, you're ready to go now, and people up, up the river bottoms of ways aren't ready to go yet, and so it's hard to know what the overall will look like, but, I mean, the, the concept of what you're saying, you know, like, comments made, sounds like a nice little development. Right there in the river bottoms is a little di, different than putting it in, say, you know, this 30 acres up here of Jay Lee Butler's or Ludlow's or whatever. I don't know how many acres that is, but you know what I'm saying, it's just a little, so, anyway, it's a, it's a nice concept and everything. I, I missed the last meeting, I don't know what the feedback was from the...
Well, most of the residents, I mean, this has been ongoing for two and a half years that I've been working on this to get, on the annexation of it, and I totally get it. Our, our parents left in their will, the agreement, well, it was not even an agreement, they just told us, you'll sell it and everybody will get an equal part. So we don't have the luxury of just leaving it being, as it is. We have to do something with that.
We ended up taking some of the risk and buying some of our siblings out.
So it was sold to, so you, you did that, got you.
We did it. So that, because we want it, we wanted to develop it and we want it to be nice. We don't want to sell it to another developer. That's what we feel about the, if it goes to low density, we kind of feel like our hands are tied, you know, to that, to selling it probably to somebody else.
Low, low density would be really hard to justify the cost of the infrastructure, especially...
And the roads and the improvements going in there, I'm trying to think of the road going in there. You just had to make all those changes, I guess, huh?
So Volunteer Drive would go, show them where it comes off Main Street. The Volunteer Drive comes off Main Street, right at Volun...
Comes right up here.
Right.
And goes straight east to a roundabout.
About here, and then...
Straight over to 7650.
7650 south, which goes, is the Canyon Road.
I think they're looking at this being a transition of, you know, commercial, but I don't know, you guys can decide as a transition sort of, but...
Yeah.
I think it's a pretty big transition.
And no, there's no, there's no proposed development yet on the parts closer to Main Street yet, right?
Not yet. This, this piece right here is owned by McKell's, this, this piece.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's, ends up here, and...
Peter's.
Peterson, Peterson ends up here. So, this, so yeah, this is all, this was all, they were looking at high density. In discussions with them, they're looking at normal multi-story condo or apartments, some kind of thing, so. But I don't, I don't know what they're gonna do, I don't, you know, that's up to you guys, but right now, it was showing us high density, this was showing us median density.
Well, I'll just, I'll just add that, I mean, adding more and more townhomes is not necessarily my favorite thing, but your idea of adding senior living is something that we've talked as a planning commission for some time now, that it is needed, and that would be a beautiful area for, for that kind of development, and I think helps us stay true to that area, so...
If we could support senior living here, and it looks like it's, that demand is still there, we can still do that along here. It's just, it's gonna be butted up against some more dense, more dense area, which is why, the only reason why we propose...
And it might be the right place, I mean, that's just my opinion, that doesn't mean it's not the best thing.
Well, that's why we put the townhomes in as a transition.
And I, and I think I agree with you, Tracy. I, to me, I would, I, I don't have an issue with the transition from senior housing to a higher-density apartment, but you're talking about, talking to a kid from San Diego, so, you know, density here is not the same as what I was used to, so. But I, but that being said, I, I still think that, that transition here with the concept you showed, I would be more comfortable having it all be the, the, the senior housing rather than the townhomes. I, I just feel like the density, even though I, yes, I realize, I, I think we need to make a quicker transition than we might normally be comfortable with doing because of the nature of the river bottoms, so.
I don't, I don't, we're certainly not opposed to that, we're just trying to figure out what...
What works best.
What's gonna work, and so I, I don't know how many senior living units we can market.
And, you know, from our perspective, we don't really care how much you can make or don't make.
Right.
And I understand, I understand, and that's perfect, we understand.
The one thing that has been good for me, I did not know or realize that, that Volunteer Drive is going to be going bisecting through that. That was kind of a revelation for me that helps me understand the nature of the beast. I, I guess, again, it's, you know, the connection to Main Street would be contingent upon other development that would occur there, and it's not something that the city's just gonna jump in and make that connection, which concerns me a little bit in terms of the number of people. We're talking about trying to stuff into this little space here and get them all out through South Lane.
South Lane.
It's a very, very narrow, agreed, so that, that, I don't know how we deal with that. I, I look to staff for some recommendations there because, I mean, that's a conversation we've had on other projects where, you know, having a single point of access becomes trouble, problematic.
We have another access over here down River Bottoms Road.
So you talked about doing away with Bradford Lane.
That's not Bradford Lane, no, yeah.
Yeah, we were talking about maybe from, maybe from here to...
There, to, in, in between Lamp Home and Miling Hales.
Probably right here to here.
Doing away with Bradford Lane.
But again, that's just the...
That helps with that bad intersection, yeah.
That bad, that intersection right there is concerned about.
Then you wouldn't have traffic going on to that bad intersection.
But that, I mean, we have no problem keeping Bradford Lane open, it's just an idea...
If that's what the city wants.
Yeah, we'll, we'll rely on staff to give direction on the road system there, as long as, again, I think, you know, we, we've always kind of gone under, what, 50, 50 units?
On a single access, yeah.
On a single access point.
It's probably worth noting, this is an earlier concept. As, as we reviewed the concept here, we, we kind of evolved into, you know, we need this concept of getting Volunteer Drive down through the middle of the river bottoms as that, you know, someday in the future develops. So that's where it's kind of adjusted, but the, the biggest thing we've discussed between staff and the applicants is the roads, not only just isolated this property, but the whole annexation area, River Bottoms Road, South Lane, the canal's next to it. It's, it's a big concern that, that needs to be addressed as things develop.